All too well.
Okay. We got it, okay, we're good. Okay. I like to call notes to plan for November 21st, 2022. Okay. Exter, a first open public meeting by site plan application for 259 and 273 Lancaster Street, map 484, process 10-11 battery energy storage system. My one is close enough. I'll open a second public hearing for a special permit use application for 259 and 273 Lancaster Street, map 484, process 10-11 battery.
You're gonna have to purl over here.
Yeah, so the camera can get a picture of it.
You do this hooking them.
Use this one here.
And for the record, please say your name and your.
Okay. So I'll just stay up here. If that's okay.
That's your spot.
Excellent. There you go, thank you. All right, yes, good evening members of board. My name is Brandon Smith, New Leaf Energy Civil Engineer with this project. Here with me is Erin Kendrick, project developer for this project. As the chair mentioned, this is a battery energy storage project. It's located at 259 Lancaster Street, which is actually a corner lot on Lancaster Street here of Margory Ave. This lot right now is in the U B area, it's a vacant lot here. It's a local place of battery storage facility. So what that is, is basically a series of commercial batteries. On this plan here, there's this blue, long, kind of rectangular path. So what these are, are battery enclosures, metal enclosures, that are placed in long strip footings, concrete pads, and there are four of them in this project. So it's a 12-megawatt battery project. This red rectangle that you see here is a perimeter wall, 14 feet, and kind of enclosing the facility. And the actual facility is interconnected into the distribution grid on Margory Ave via some utility interconnection equipment on utility bolts placed on the backside of the facility. So we did present to the mayor at an end to the departmental meeting this summer, and I think.
Technical review.
Technical review, thank you. And one of the, kind of the big takeaway from that meeting was aesthetics, aesthetics, aesthetics. So what we've incorporated into the plan is not really shown on this plan, but we had a landscape architect put together a landscaping plan. There is that 14-foot wall that also, not only does it provide the security that we need for the system, but it also provides a screening, so you actually come the street.
So it's a solid wall?
Solid wall, yes. And I have a, I'll flip this over in a moment. So that provides that screen, you know, you won't see the equipment, you'll see that wall with the landscaping. We actually have, so storm art calculations have been done to ensure that the runoff from the sites, actually staying onsite, not utilizing city facilities. There's actually a basin proposed here, and we're actually proposing landscaping on that side as well. So two roads of landscaping to kind of create that depth, if you will. Let me flip this over. We had visual simulations done of the facility. This is an existing image of the site. As I mentioned, a vacant lot, grass, there's some trees there. This is the supposed, post-construction, a little hard to see, but basically that's that first row of things, and then some along the fence, and then five-year rendering, which we, that was submitted to the board as well. So again, just to ensure that this site is, you know, adequately screened and fits in with the visual aesthetics of the area. A few other pieces of information on this project. We have submitted information to the fire department. They reviewed it, I know at the technical review meeting, as well as we are setting up a meeting with the Department of Fire Services at the state for the project, just to ensure. We've already actually worked with them on other projects in the states and kind of know what they're expecting, but we're going to set that up with the fire department, just to make sure that, you know, all any questions they have are answered. So I think from there, having answered any questions the board may have, that's kind of the project in a nutshell.
How many other projects like this have you done in the state?
So the, so this project is kind of working within the Clean Heat Program at Massachusetts, pretty new. So there are a handful, probably around like five projects that we've worked on in the state that are up and running, but we actually have many more that are in development. The ones that are up and running are smaller in nature, so there are, there's one with the Acton-Botsboro High School, for example, we have a project in there. And there are a few others that escaped me at the moment, but of this size, these are kind of, this is the newest type of project that's, that's being incorporated into the state, so.
So that gets pumped back into the local distribution or the overall distribution?
It's a drift of matter.
Is it benefits to the city, the power, the extra power they gain from that, or is it to replace something else somewhere along the line?
That, yeah, that's actually a really good question, I kind of didn't touch on that. So to answer your first question, it is a distributed generation project, so it's the actual distribution grid, not, not a transmission level project. So, you know, there are larger battery projects out there being proposed, but that are transmission level, this one's a distribution level. And the purpose of, you know, why these are needed is basically it's replacing, in effect, peaker plants. So right during those, during the periods of peak demands on the, on the grid, they, you know, the grid may need to call on some peaker plants, which are typically the dirtiest plants, to, to provide that kind of, that spike in energy that, you know, when everyone gets home, turns on their lights and all that. So what this can do is sort of, instead of the grid relying on those plants, the idea is that it'll have that reserve battery capacity in the grid that they can draw on that battery, that stored energy, that's stored during the middle of the day when we have more solar and, you know, more renewables in the grid. So capturing that kind of cleaner energy, storing it and dispatching it during those times when people need it, which is typically the easiest.
So it's capturing, I just, I just curious about the whole technology. So it's capturing, I mean, is it cap, it's not capturing stuff from the regular grid, it's capturing stuff from, you know. It's taking the regular grid to charge up as well, and as well as the local, like, solar farms, or can Mouser to tie to it?
Yeah, so basically it's drawing from the grid and dispatching to the grid, it's just the timing. During, you know, noon.
Right.
It's drawing from the, typically, obviously depending on where it's going, but typically it's drawing, you know, the middle of the day, very noon, when there's a lot of solar on the grid.
Yep.
And then dispatching in the evening when the sun's gone down, and traditionally it's a dirtier mix in the grid.
Right.
So in that way, it's sort of, in that way, it's kind of facilitating additional solar renewables to be added to the grid without creating this kind of mismatch, mismatch of, you know, production and demand.
Are there actual employees in it, who are working on site?
Nope, nope, it's an unmanned site, so similar, I don't know how, how many solar projects you might have seen, but it's sort of similar to that where it's distributed generation, so it's connected, you know, same thing there. Unmanned, operated, or I'm sorry, O and M will be needed a handful of times a year, but typically it kind of runs on its own.
But it is monitored 24/7, wait, I forgot your name and.
Bye.
Sorry, I'm Erin Kendrick, I'm the project developer on the project, from New Leaf Energy as well. It is monitored 24/7 by the O and M company, so that they're, they're watching to make sure everything's going okay, and then if they do need to go out and do some maintenance.
They have a network.
Correct, yeah.
First, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
What's the noise level?
So there is some noise produced from the air conditioners. So each of these units, if you recall from that, from the layout, switch it over. These blue rows, you may not be able to see, but each, in these rows, there are, you know, individual squares, and each of those is a metal enclosure of the batteries, and each of those have an air conditioner, because when batteries are running, they produce energies, especially, you know, of this size, each one of those squares is about like five by eight, so it's a good size. So that's where the noise is coming from. We did perform a noise study in the project. It's basically, each one generates around 67 decibels at two meters, which may not mean, mean much, but we've done, you know, ambient measurements of the site, and if any of you are familiar with MAST, the Noise Policy Guidelines, we did that to make sure that we're meeting those guidelines. And we're actually, you know, several decibels below what the requirement is. So I think it's, let's say it was 43 decibels at the nearest receptor, which, again, if anyone's familiar, like, 40, you know, 40-decibel range is, they're pretty quiet.
Well, it's pretty light.
This room's louder than that likely, I'm probably in the 50s.
But that's, you know, six feet away, the remains, so about nine feet, nine, 10 feet. And then your, if your buffer is, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you can see that on the.
So if your buffers, what are the buffers, measure on the sides, and, well, what are the measure, I mean, I can hear, you know, offhand, so I don't have to look.
Yeah, so it's, so we're 70 feet from Lancaster Street, about 50 feet from the property line to Margory Ave. I think the closest receptor for residents is on the corner of Lancaster and Wheeler Street, and that's kind of, that's where that 43-decibel measurement that, or estimate, I should say, is located. But other than that, it's mostly just still that this is a vacant lot here.
Oh, yeah, I know, well, I'm just wondering, you know, will the fencing maybe subdue some of that in the plantings?
Yes, the plantings don't do so much, but the, but the wall, kind of the screen, you know, it provides multiple benefits. It screens the system, and it does provide that, that noise mitigation, yeah. And that, as I mentioned, it's pretty, it's 14-foot, and it does kind of drop that noise level down to, I think it was four decibels below the TP policy.
So, I mean, you kept the buffer from the batteries anyway, and then you have the buffer to the streets. So you're saying that, you know, the high decimal carries at about three meters, right? Is that what it was?
Two, so the outputs of each unit is 67 decibels at two meters.
Two meters, or about 67 feet, yeah.
Yeah.
But if it was the buffers and the other.
Right, it drops down with that distance, and the walls also drop that down.
I just wanted to understand that, you know, that's going to, that level of cuts as it gets near any homes or.
The pretty much any noise is going to stay on the site?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, at the, in the middle of the night, well, actually, because the ambient measurements that were taken, you know, the area actually is, has a fairly high ambient level, so.
Right.
Any noise, you know, any noise that's produced onsite is going to be well within the MAST guidelines.
So in terms of safety, you talked about how this is one, one of the larger projects that you've worked on. There's residential, potential density is pretty high there. This is a high concentration of lithium on batteries. That's a pool supply company, there's chemicals right there. It's a plastic bag.
How washable?
Yeah, so, again, right, we're going to meet with the Department of Fire Safety at the state with the fire department, make sure, you know, any concerns or the strategy that they have, that we're kind of meeting their needs. But also, what we've submitted to the fire department, what we reviewed, is these battery units are UL tested, so it's 95/40, which is basically, what they do is they, they test these units to ensure that there's no, that they don't, you know, there's no spread in the event of a fire or something, there's no spread, you know, it's contained to one unit. There are also many, many kind of layers of security, I don't know, you know, if anyone's familiar with like aviation security, there's layers upon layers upon layers. So first, as Erin mentioned, right, there's kind of 24/7 monitoring, there's battery monitoring systems within the units that kind of manage or view, you know, the voltage and the heat, and make sure everything's within the set parameter, and will shut down if anything's outside that. You know, if one of those, whatever, fails or is outside the parameter, and let's say if heat's being produced, the units do have a clean agent, kind of enclosed each unit, has a.
Basically.
Clean agent, yeah, fire system.
Sort of like a gas station, hangar or something like that.
I've been told that, was these, that was NICAT?
It's Lithium Ion System.
You know, the, you don't put water on them?
That's correct, yeah.
So they, they use inert gas of some kind, or is there something special that the fire department have to use?
It's, it's an inert gas, it's called STATX, it's in, it's in the unit, so the fire department wouldn't have to worry about it or use it. And what that, what that is for is to kind of stop that chain reaction before it gets to a point where it's, you know, threshold fires. So that's kind of the, you know, that's the, the goal, is to stop any chain reaction from happening before anything happens. That UL testing that I, that I mentioned earlier, that's kind of like, worst-case scenario, if it did, this chain reaction did happen, then it's contained. And actually, you know, well, obviously the testing, they did, they did pass to make sure that those units don't spread to adjacent units, and that's actually what you, you know, we see in, in practice as well, you know, across the world, you might hear scenarios, and they're contained. Sort of a, you know, design for.
Was it technology or something?
I know battery.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where are the walls? Where's going to go with the wood, very quickly, it's quite.
Yeah, they, yeah. I, I made a phone call to Molester, didn't do anything, but I did some stuff online and found out that the store like that, it's got three. Okay, they're smaller ones.
But they're municipal.
They have, they have their own Minnesota power plant. So what they, they put them in like the Griffler, like when it was in 16.
My worry is having this, this concentration of batteries this close to the city center.
There's, there, all of their batteries are very rural areas. That's rural. Yes, it's all. Yeah, that's the only concern I have about, you know, it is, you know, it's not, you know, it's, there's industry, their homes, yeah.
St. Leos is a couple doors down.
What's that?
St. Leos is a couple doors down, school.
St. St. Anne's.
Because they're outside of the.
Is this residence?
The 300 feet.
It's, I believe it's two lots, and correct me if I'm wrong, one is commercial and one is residential?
One's residence, B.
Both are commercial.
Both of them are?
Both are commercial.
Yes. Resident, the line is on this side, Jason. The line is on this side between resident, over here, Business B, over here to the right, and commercial to the left.
I don't get the zoning lines on, or the property line, Jason.
Yeah. One's in the property line. It was shown on one of these drawings.
Probably 1.0, yeah. What, what's the zone, what residence is it, what's its zone?
Commercial.
And residence B?
No, commercial.
It's all commercial.
It's a commercial zone?
It's all commercial.
That's not on the plan, is it, anyways?
Yes.
It is.
I found it someplace.
Yeah, just looking for myself.
I thought it was on C 1.0, but I.
C 1?
Found it.
That Elizabeth noted it in her review.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know the, you know, subject parcel is definitely wrong.
This is a.
Zone.
This is a.
And then it's right over the, okay.
And then commercial over here, okay, right here, so.
Yeah, no, it's right at the end of these, it's residence B, residence B, isn't it?
What's that?
This the area, town, residence.
No, business.
Oh, business.
It's a business.
Yeah, that's pool supply, right, that's.
Yeah, restaurant, right. Okay, so this is, this is.
So it's here is commercial to business.
Right.
For anyone that can't see, basically, the zoning, zoning boundaries right here, so like.
Right.
Yeah, business, commercial. Yeah, yep, yeah, you know, the preliminary technical review, the fire department had, didn't have concerns about access, but obviously they want to, you know, to your point, you know, make sure that there's no concerns that they're not thinking about, and we, we work at the state before, and obviously that's important, so we work with them, you know, accommodate whatever requests that they have.
So it's not like it's going to add a big amount of traffic on Margory Ave, because that's where you're going to be coming in down on Margory?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that is the entrance, yep, but.
Yep.
You know, a handful of, you know, six, five, six trips a year.
A year, yeah.
The only time it will start construction, they're rolling.
Oh, yeah, construction, obviously, yeah, that does.
Because that's really, that's close to the corner too, you know, so if you had high flow off every day, that's right at that corner of 117, so just asking the questions.
Have you driven Margory Avenue?
I have not, no.
Oh, you gotta.
Oh, you gotta take it back, it's much better now. Much better now.
Much better.
Do you remember what that was like before they did what they did?
It has, it's changed.
Yeah, it did.
They kind of mirror that.
Yeah, they sort of mirror that.
Is there anything special about this lot, is that, you need it for the tie-in or anything?
Um, yeah, Erin, I don't know if you.
Sorry, I didn't hear your question.
Is there anything special about this lot in particular that you need to tie to grid or anything? Again, just, I'm concerned about this being so close to the city center. There are lots of.
Yeah.
A lot of chemicals.
Close to the highway, closer to, you know.
Maybe the homeowners should be concerned about how close they.
Yeah, the main thing is just, the, there's poles there that we can interconnect to, it's not too far from the substation. We're, we're already in study with the utilities, where they're, they're studying us there, and they think that we can, they can accommodate a project there, so. I mean, they're not explosive, so, I mean, we definitely make sure to go through all the manufacturers' things with the fire department, and we're making sure that we also have any operations and maintenance plans, or emergency plans, or all those kinds of things are shared broadly, so everybody kind of knows and understands.
But I, you know, I know that we're seeing more and more of these, just in residential homes, right?
That too, yeah.
What?
Yeah.
This is exponentially more energy stored in one place, right?
Yeah.
Like, to what, to what degree? How big is a residential battery energy storage system compared to something like this?
This is 12 meg.
Hundreds.
Eons.
Right, this could run the whole city for.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, how big, how big an area could this run on its own?
Um. I'm the civil engineer, but I.
No, no, I, I'm not holding you any dummies, I'm just cheering on us, you know?
Yeah, it's definitely more than one home, you know, it's going to supply for.
A whole.
Within that area.
Chain of the city.
For, for, you know, a period of four hours.
Yeah. And repeat that company.
Yeah, so it's basically, it could run, you know, hundreds of, of residential homes.
What's the recharge cycle? Or is it, does it charge out during that night?
Yeah, it'll charge some at night, some during the day. They, we have to time it so that we're charging when renewable energy is, is kind of at its peak, but load is at its lowest, and then we discharge when load is at its, at its highest, and renewable energies tend to be lower. So it depends on, on how much we're allowed to charge per hour, so it can take anywhere from kind of four to 12, 16 hours to charge, and then, but if we're charging at lower rates, it would be kind of less energy that we're pulling per hour, but then it discharges for four hours. So it's putting more energy back on the grid for four hours. At least that's the, that's the intention right now.
Okay. Do you have any other questions for the board?
Thank you.
Can I read the? Do you mind, John, if I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I don't, did you have an opportunity to review the department had comments?
Yes.
So just for the record, the Board of Health, and we've discussed, most of these sound levels must be minimal, not to interfere with neighbors, sound laws should help this. Lighting, glare should not be brought of some to abiding neighbors, any hazardous waste that is generated must be disposed of in accordance with state federal laws. Any, we, we discussed sounds, what about light?
Lighting.
Lighting and hazardous waste?
Security lighting.
Uh, yeah, so for lighting, there's no permanent lighting, so it won't be illuminated on a regular basis. The only lighting that'll be onsite is in the event of someone's going to work at night, they'll, you know, there'll be a switch operated lighting. There's lighting inside the battery enclosures, again, only operated if someone needs to be working on it at night. So, you know, I get, the main thing is there's, there's no permanent, you know, daily lighting.
And hazardous waste, do you anticipate any?
Uh, no, the only, really the only thing to mention there is the, well, batteries don't present a, you know, a spill hazard or anything like that, the transformers use a, usually a mineral oil, that there will be a secondary containment system in place to ensure that if there's a leak or anything, it doesn't enter the soil, but other than that, no, no hazardous waste.
Okay. And then conservation says landscaping projected to reduce noise and view of facility with native plantings well done. So they, they approve and Board of Health approves. DPW.
With those comments.
With those comments, yes. States it needs more information, a deep hole, hole test pit witnessed by the Department of Public Works is required at the infiltration base and location. Did you discuss that with them?
We haven't discussed that with them, I, I would request, I mean, we definitely can do that, take care of that, I would request that that be a condition of approval, obviously we'll make sure that that.
Yeah, that would be a.
Assessor approves with no comments. Building approves with no comments. The Lomester Police Department states it needs more information. During the technical review meeting, some form of crash mitigation system should be installed, bollards, guardrails, or some other barrier to minimize the chance that the batteries are stuck by an out-of-control vehicle during a crash or incident. I don't see anything referenced in the plan.
Yes, sorry, I mentioned, because I, I should have mentioned that. We actually did respond back with an updated plan set, which is this one here. Kind of hard to see here, but basically we're proposing bollards on the north and east side at five-foot intervals, just in case.
You don't have a detail for the bollards on your plan?
No.
And they talked about, you show the bollards on the outside, and there was. and there was some requests they haven't put on the inside. Does there, I, I don't know about that, mate. I just wanted to address that.
Yeah, I mean, so, you know, in the event of having them come into play, uh, the thought was a vehicle hitting the sound wall could prevent a hazard, you know? You don't, don't want that.
Yeah.
A vehicle hitting the wall that could fall over or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, that's the idea behind putting them on the outside. We understand, right, we don't want to kind of ruin the aesthetics that we've put together for this, um, but potentially painting them, you know, the same color as the, as the wall, um, I think may, if the board, um, you know, agree instantly.
I, I question that comment myself. The ball, the ballers only inside because, uh, I said that the...
Well, so, I mean, so...
Ballers opposed.
Yes, so the police department, uh, Dan, on November 8th stated, because that comment was from the middle of October...
Right.
Um, to the planning department. The ballards look acceptable. The only thing I think the mayor may have a problem with is that they are shown outside the site sound area fencing. I believe this would detract from the mayor's desire to have curb appeal for this project. In the interest of keeping the project visibly pleasing, I would suggest possibly moving them, the ballards, inside the fencing or moving the fencing outside the ballards. Otherwise, I'm satisfied.
Well, you have clusters of, uh, bushes around the ballards.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, I think the landscape...
Do it, it's not a landscape, you know? It's in the libraries around.
No, I don't know.
You know?
I agree, that, yeah, there's two things.
Yeah, I think you...
Don't want, you gotta put them on the, your detail on the plan.
Yes.
And, uh...
You get nice bushes, they'll let, you know, get scraggly or...
I'm glad to see it's blueberry bushes, I don't know where to go.
It must be, like, it's frustrating, though, right? Because they want you to, they want you to have protection, but then they say, well, we need it to look good, too.
Yeah.
So, I don't...
We're used to it.
Yeah, I'm sure you are.
Give them a few push-ups.
The fire department says awaiting guidance from the state fire marshal. Do you know anything more about that?
Uh, we're currently coordinating a meeting with the engineering department there.
So it's still outstanding?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then, okay, and then Elizabeth, in terms of planning, um, did you have any specific...
Um, they had revised plans. They brought in my, what you're looking at is my review of the revised plans.
Okay.
They took care of most everything. Um, this, no storage needed to be detailed more specifically. And then, um, in terms of pedestrian walkways, the board has to decide whether or not, um, it's acceptable to not install sidewalks and bicycle racks.
Pedestrian walkway?
Yeah.
500 feet of school, same, same as this, two goes down. Everyone, you need to walk by, you go home.
No, it's a high key area.
And then, you know, as it is a special permit for section 13.2.4, the proposal would not be a substantial inconvenience or hazard to our busers, vehicles, and pedestrians. So the board has to weigh in with the fire department and make sure that that's not a issue.
Well, there's sidewalks there, right?
There are sidewalks. There are sidewalks on Lancaster Street. There's not currently one.
There's not on Marguerite, right.
Yeah.
There's nothing this way either, so...
Yes. High tracks here.
So with the Lincoln Terrace.
Just want to put ballers in front here, and you're gonna have a big hole. Basically, they'll start anything, go into the...
Yeah, they're gonna get stuck in the stormwater basin.
They're gonna go into the stormwater basin before they get through.
The ballers.
Yeah. Multiple layers of protection, we're all about that.
Yeah. Yeah, if you throw in 100, you might get through, I don't think so.
But yeah, as far as sidewalks, I mean, we, we, we didn't propose it on Marguerite Ave, just...
No, 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 no.
We're already on Marguerite.
Well, you're not disrupting the sidewalks on, on 117, are you?
No.
Now, that all the work is gonna be carried out through Marguerite Ave?
Yep.
Okay. Well, I'll open up to the audience. Do I have any questions?
Have you been on it?
I have, yeah.
Do I have any questions, anybody from the audience?
Just, just 20 years.
Sal?
Huh?
Do I have any questions from anyone from the audience? Now, let's begin.
Okay.
Do I have any questions, comments from anyone from the audience? Third and final time. Do I have any questions, okay, from the audience? Back to the U-Board. Do we have anything else?
Uh, are you gonna have to provide snow plowing or access at all times in this, too? Is there a snow, I didn't notice, is there a snow, uh, storage plan for the site?
That was in my comments, so, um, they have to demonstrate that it's adequate.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that's, I think that's one of our actions.
That's it, actually, the ballards and the, uh, snow storage.
Fire department.
The fire department, yeah.
Because right now, you know, the plan we did plow, it, it will need to be accessed, so plowed it to the ends of these pull offs, but we'll provide those calculations to make sure there's enough space.
And on the plan, you gotta put it on the detail.
I'm sorry, the, the battery?
The battery, the installation.
Enclosures?
The enclosure.
Uh, they're 10 feet tall. So they're five by eight by 10.
So what, 14?
Sound partly, screening and sound, yeah.
Readability.
Just, it's a big wall.
Read... Well, the fence is 14 feet, so...
Fortress.
There you go.
It's like a four feet pushes.
Yeah, and we purposely tried to push it as far to the back, you know, back corner of the property as, as possible, just to not make its own pose.
If you, if you're gonna need sound off, you gotta have a high wall, you know, to push it up. If you have a low wall, it's gonna let, you know, that area, so...
Yeah, I mean, I just, I mean, there are, there are, uh, there are walls, fences, or whatever you wanna call them, that do have some kind of acoustic absorption as well. So that could be a solution to anything, and I don't know if you provided that with any of your other projects?
Yes, and that's actually what will be, that's part of what is proposed here, so...
And that's specified in the plans?
Yeah, it's in their sound, um, report that we submitted, that the wall will need to be, um...
Sound absorption.
Absorption rather than reflective.
Right.
I'm just really concerned about safety.
Okay.
Having the network...
Well, I think, um, got a lot of information. I think it's pretty good. I think we had some outstanding issues with the drawing, with the ballards, uh, not showing, and the, the snow storage. And the big one is we gotta wait for the, the fire department to come back, and you're already working with the state. So I think at this time, emotion would be in order to continue this to our next meeting. And, uh, and we'll permit, uh, so move...
Second.
Let all of that, but... Elizabeth, what date would that be?
6:30 December 5th.
Elizabeth, no, I thought we moved in the December to the 19th.
So we're gonna...
We have to meet in December 1st.
It's, it's, um, we have two in the box.
Is there a reason to have two, since we have nothing else?
We usually try to have one in December, then we're gonna do that.
I'd rather have the...
It's gonna come back to you.
I'd rather have the 5th.
And we don't know, we will hear back from the fire department, so...
How long will it take the state to...
Um, I, I'm not sure. I, we just recently reached out, we haven't set a circle to see on the calendar yet.
Yep, yep.
So I think we should do one, I don't care which one.
Well, yeah, but the 5th, I think the 5th is gonna be kind of close, with the holiday falling in there.
Thanksgiving, it's not...
Being, being realistic.
Yeah.
Little statement, react to that some?
I, I, being, being honest, um, I, that probably would be tight. I would do everything I could to, to get the answer, but...
But it wouldn't be, yeah, it wouldn't be just...
Wouldn't be a guarantee, yeah.
So why don't we do...
And I know that, uh...
Why don't we do the 19th, and why we do the...
So you go, what if you on the 5th?
It'd be the 19th.
And if you don't, then you can always...
Okay, so one meeting in December for the 19th?
Yeah, we'll try to do in December, just the 19th.
So that was the site plan at 6:30 by Tom and Carol?
Yeah, that's, that's...
So I have a motion made and second to continue this hearing to December 19th at, uh, 6:30?
That's the site plan?
That's the site plan.
Yeah.
Okay. I have a motion by Paul, second by Carol.
Oh, you're ready?
Yeah.
Sure, okay?
Sure. Okay, sounds good, huh?
So nobody even...
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries on the special permit.
No, that was on the, uh...
No.
For the special permit? Make it 6:30.
Yeah.
6:31. Paul's motion.
Second.
Second by Tommy. Any discussion on that? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time. Hopefully, we don't have a snowstorm on our end.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's right, you know, about the season.
No, I did, I did.
I was up north and I saw weird, you know, my neighbors, and we saw what it was.
The weather a month from now.
I know. Thank you, though.
Get my stuff here somewhere. You sure it's in there?
Do you want another one?
I don't mind comparing it to my meal. Okay, open public hearing for deviation from approved subdivision. Uh, Woodlands at Massapod subdivision. 58 Dobton Circle, Lot 15.
Thank you.
Huh? Well, this is, um...
Can we preserve it?
We have reserved it.
For, for Owen and the votes on this.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening. My name is Anthony Calleys with Hady Ward, here on behalf of the Scotty Development. Some of you may recall, uh, back in 2004, we had proposed and had approved a residential subdivision, 26 lots, called Woodlands at Massapod, that extended off of Dale Ab and Judy Drive intersection into two cul-de-sacs, again, 26 residential lots. As part of the review and approval from the planning board at that time, there was, um, some unsurety on what was gonna happen with an adjacent piece of land up to the, to the east of the property. And through the review and approval of the board, uh, it was required that we reserve one of the lots to be utilized for potential future access, which was here, Lot 15 in orange, such that if, if this property adjacent would be developed, uh, which is off of Pier Street, I'll show you that in a second, you know, there'd be an option for, you know, proper planning to, to connect the subdivisions together um, at, at that time. And so, as part of that approval, there was a couple waivers that were requested. Dead end street length, number of lots, um, off of a dead end. And so, the decision was, was written, similar to what is here, that the whole Lot 15 was to be reserved for, for future access. So since that time, this is more recent, so a bunch of yous remember this one from a month or two ago. Uh, this is the, the subdivision next door.
We remember that, this is that lot.
Exactly. Pier Street, recently approved subdivision, dead end. Here's Woodlands at Massapod.
The lane in between.
Yeah, so this is the road that I just showed you here, one of them. That orange Lot, Lot 15 is this one here. So through the design and, and review of this, you can see wetlands were gonna be an issue. And we, it, this property wasn't looking to really overdevelop as possible. So kind of a shorter cul-de-sac, minimal lots here. So there's no connection needed to Woodlands at Massapod. Again, it was gonna be, yeah, a more environmentally difficult series of wetland crossings. And also, my recollection from some of the hearings from some of the neighbors, uh, I don't think they were excited at first. They heard that these were gonna be tied together and, and basically created a traffic, you know, connection from their Day Street area out through Pier Street. So, um, that was probably gonna be a deterrent if we were even worth to try and do that. So thus, uh, the request by the Scotty Development to ask to have a decision, I guess amended, uh, to, to remove that restriction?
Yeah.
On Lot 15 deviation.
A lot of deviation.
So, so basically, exactly, this could be a buildable lot to go back to the order originally proposed, but that's 26 lots. Free overview for you?
Yeah, it's, I mean, I mean, it makes sense, so you can get that lot. Just the, um, the Department head comments, conservation, no comment. Board of Health, no comment. DPW approves. Board of Health approves. When I say no comment, I mean they approve. Uh, police approve, fire approve, and the building inspector apparently thinks the subdivision has expired.
But we got a legal opinion on that, and we're okay.
Well, I don't even know why it did. The whole thing is built out, but it's fine.
Well, because of his karma, we had to get a legal opinion.
It's just wrong. It's built out. I don't know how something can be expired when it was done.
Yeah.
Yep.
But anyway, it's done. It's been taken care of. Uh, are you all set? No, I just gotta open it up to the audience. Do I have any comments from anyone in the audience? Okay. Oh, that's, yeah. I don't think I have to ask again. Anything else, any question from the board?
No, I moved to call, yeah, second pulse motion.
Paul's motion to close the hearing, a second by Carol. Any further discussion to close the hearing? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. Regular meeting, called to honor.
Thank you.
Patrick Perla, excuse, Paul Weiser, South of Albany.
You're here.
Toritto Rosso.
Here.
Tom Karenin.
Here.
Jason Parry.
Here.
Dean Baier, excuse, John Sisza.
Yeah. Minutes, done. Plan submitted, done. Openers, none. What is going with it? Site plan application for 259, 273 Lancaster Street, map 484 Paso 10-11, battery energy storage system. Uh, this has been continued. 5.2, special permit use. Application for 259 and 273 Lancaster Street, map 484 Paso 10-11, battery energy storage system. This has been contained. Five point three, deviation from approved subdivision, Woodlands at Massapod subdivision, fifty-eight Dobton Circle.
Sounds like a convenient thing to me.
From a Lot fifteen. Well, that's the legal termination. Uh, do I have any discussion on this? Do I have a vote?
I'm going to approve the vote.
Yeah, the basis of the.
Second. I have a motion made in second to approve the deviation. Okay, do I have any discussion, further discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most say no. Motion carries.
Thank you very much for coming.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hi, Anthony.
Is he still?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, communications. Day Street subdivision, Sawyer Way, New England Land Company, planning board to review three quotes for estimates of cost of approving Sawyer Way to completion for road acceptance. Or to advise staff to reach out to New England Land Company to request permission to partially excuse the bond to cover the cost of providing estimate. I think we already did that.
You have to promote it some time.
But we have to vote to, what we have is, we got three quotes in, in front of us. Uh, we had one, if it was under five thousand, then we could have done it without it. But we got, well, we got one from Bill Scully for, I think it comes out total at fourteen thousand nine fifty. McCarty is twenty thousand one hundred. And the third company.
The National Associates.
Yeah, is thirty-six thousand nine fifty. Yeah. So, um.
And that includes as-built.
And that includes the as-built. So what the plan would be, would be, he would come in with the as-built and they recommend what, what the costs are to finish that road. So we can take the, the money today from the past book account, not a bond, it's a past book account, and, uh, pay for this part, pay for the information we need. And this also includes deeds and, and to get that all squared away, ready to be accepted by the city. And then they'll come back and say, okay, it's gonna cost so much for the road, and then could be another twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars, but that would be, you know, and then we go for, for bits to have the road done.
And we have, how much do we have in there?
Eighty.
Eighty-four something?
Eighty-four thousand.
So we have enough to cover this and the repairs if necessary, plus some.
Yeah, we should have some, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think the issue, there was some issue back and forth this morning. If I'm not a lawyer, I thought they had a bond. But years ago, we got rid of bonds because we got burned by too many of them. So like I said, the guy, the people on the property, they passed away. So there's, they wouldn't have paid the bonds anyway.
Yeah.
So they went to lapse. So in this case, we have the past book, and we have the money in, in the account, and we have the authority to take it.
So you need a motion to take the mortgage or something?
Yeah, so the motion would be in order to
Scully?
Accept Scully for fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
That's all.
And to, and, and to withdraw the same amount from the past book account.
That's all.
Under the name of Sawyer Way.
First one on Day Street, on Newland.
Yeah, yeah, it's the land they bought from Manustock.
Yeah, very, yeah, very tough.
Okay, so Paul made the motion? Second, second. Any discussion on this?
Nope.
Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most say no. Motion carries.
Well, they're from the comptroller's office. They, they want me to get permission from the, um, the remaining, the, the remaining owner.
There is, there's a surviving owner?
There's a remaining, there's a surviving owner. And they want me to get permission from them before they'll let me take the money out.
What if they say no?
They're gonna have to say yes.
Go, go for it.
I have to get that.
That we hold the eighty-five thousand forever, you know? I mean, you don't finish the project. It doesn't make sense because the whole idea is that we hold the money.
So that we have the money to do the stuff we need with.
Yeah, totally, I think.
Well, also that it's a fault. Also that if that didn't work, it would be in default, so then it would reside up to the board to use the money as you see fit.
Well, if he said, if they said no.
If it was in default, yes.
With default to us, and we would get.
So then they'd say. So we give them the opportunity.
They're in default.
Yeah, they're in default.
They're in default right now because they have.
They don't comply, it's like, it's like.
Yeah.
We're just crossing our fingers.
Yeah.
Do we?
Okay, so I have the motion. We've had discussion. Any, anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most say no. Motion carries. Directors' report.
All right, I gave you, in your packets, it's a more lengthy directors' report. I was reflecting on the year so far. We're coming to the close. And I just wanted to highlight all of the accomplishments this, this board has done. You, you work hard. And individual members have worked on projects with me, and I wanted to point that out. So, um, if you go through, I'm not gonna read this. You can read this on your own time. But I wanted to highlight also with the staff support I have, we've been able to accomplish a lot.
Why don't you pull up some of the highlights that you have there?
Okay, um, the fours, we've done eleven, this year, just in two thousand and twenty-two, and we're not even finished yet, eleven A and Rs, whole site plans, seven special permits and two subdivisions. And you also processed eighteen petitions. And there's a lot of groundwork that goes into each one of these applications. It's not just going to the meeting. But then some other things that our department accomplished includes we established an escrow procedures along with escrow tracking system. Collecting escrow funds has been beneficial in covering the cost of the planning board to conduct outside reviews, including peer reviews of traffic studies for active applications. We have also created a system for tracking special permit expirations, which is important because there's a legal requirement for state law requiring this. The smart department staff has conducted sick tech six technical review meetings so far in two thousand and twenty-two, which includes coordination with other departments and follow-up with planning staff, providing meetings to applicants. Department staff has begun to revamp age and outdated application forms, starting with the site plan as a special permit. And this summer, a complete inventory of historical files from the past forty years in the office has been performed, aided by the assistance of intern Cooper Matthews and Principal Clerk Stephanie Wooden. We now have a complete index of all files located in the planning department office. A spreadsheet was established so that projects can be cross-referenced by project name and street name. And our records are now easily searchable and accessible for the public and city staff.
The problem there was, people say, I live on such and such a road. Well, the road had no reference to what the original name is. You know, just like today, we had Dobton Circle. But it's, it's Massapod. Okay, so there was no cross-reference.
Now we can just do a control app and.
Either name, either come in at Massapod, a Dobton Circle, and cooperate, cross-reference one another.
Then we've also collaborated with other departments. I've been working with Wendy Wease in the mayor's office, office to assist with the MBTA communities program. I also was able to cover for a coworker who was all maternity leave for three months. I helped with the facade program while she did that. I worked, we were able to help the clerks department out. They had a whole set of files that contained documents related to the planning board that was very disorganized and out of order, and we completely revamped that, put that all in order, applied it for the clerks department. Um, then we've been collaborating with the building department to gangage code enforcement. And we've had some success with that so far. We talked about that a little bit. And then, you know, I had Patrick, uh, I have board members, like I said, working on, on specific projects with, with staff and other subcommittees sometimes, and Patrick Perla did the solar ordinance. We had an ordinance on dumpsters. John Sisza helped with that. And then we had, just recently, we've been doing the parking of registered vehicles. South Chacony worked closely with that, with the subcommittee and with staff. Performance guarantees earlier in the year, John Sisza helped with that. You know, that was an important piece to helping make sure site plan is enforced. John Sisza also participated in the dividing of lots in residential A zone. We're going through that now. That's in the reading with city council. Um, and then the lot within rural residential zone, also John Sisza spearheaded that. And that's in city council right now, and one of the, it's going through a reading. And then Carol Torioso helped with updating the zoning book. She proofread the whole long document, made sure that everything that the MRPC did with staff was accurate. And we had those books published for the first time since two thousand and thirteen. So that was an accomplishment. And now we have Jason, Paray and I are currently working with the DPW other department to review plantings versus permanent pavement on cul-de-sacs. And then also on going through the entire subdivision regulations and reviewing them for state and federal standards. So, you know, I, I think this department's done a lot and without the board and without Stephanie Wooden. And, um, we did have an intern for the summer. That was helpful. We couldn't have done all this, so. I just wanna say, go to the planning board.
But I think, you know, when you put it down on paper, it really is, a lot of work has been accomplished by few. And congratulations, I, I, you both have done a fantastic job.
From the board. It's a group. It's, it's a collaborative department effort. So thank you.
Do you have anything else?
John, if you could just mention the Route twelve hearing.
Yes.
Oh, well.
Just, just have that on.
Yeah, we got a notice, it was actually on the mayor's communications today, that Thursday, December first, there'll be a public hearing at six thirty. That was at City Hall. Concerning the upgrade of Route twelve. Well, it's probably pretty much a set of section, well, all the way out to the Sterling Line. So it's gonna be an update, so. If anybody's interested in what's gonna happen on Route twelve, go to City Hall on December first at six thirty. And there'll be a hearing on that. I've got a couple things to thank everybody that went to the breakfast at the bands. This past weekend was a resounding success and all indications are, we set a new record. But not only the attendance, but, uh, the funds that were raised. And I wish everybody happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
And I think that motion is in order.
Most enjoy it.
Second.
He comes.
Once in a year. He's not true with God.
That's not true. I worked very hard this year and year. I missed a couple here and.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most say no. Motion carries. Thank you, guys.